Good evening, and welcome to City Council Conference of Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Michelle, you have the floor of the Climate Protection Agreement recommendations.
Thank you, sir, and council members and honorable mayor. And I'm gonna let you know that I'm still recovering from being sick last week, so my energy level and my voice are not the same as they usually are, and I apologize.
I can't tell the difference.
Good, because I can't, and I was like, oh, my gosh. Anyway, let's talk about this. This is really exciting. And we've undergone from about twenty twenty-two to now a review and update of the mayor's climate protection agreement. E-CAB really spent a lot of work going through each of the elements, looking at what we've done in the years since we re-looked at it in two thousand eighteen to now, and I think you're gonna be impressed. I want to throw out a huge thank you to lots of staff in Norman. Uh, your city staff is amazing, because they were definitely available and willing to talk to the E-CAB members whenever they needed information or someone to talk to, and that was huge. And I also want to let you know that E-CAB members will be reaching out to department heads and probably you guys as well to talk about the recommendations and to see how we can make some of the recommendations go forward. With that, let's continue. So right here, you know, I always like to give you guys kind of a background of why we do, and I gotta stand up. Why we do what we do. So I put this slide on here to kind of, because it was pretty dramatic to me. This is from the, um, the National Environmental Information Center. And what it is, it's a list of all the billion dollars, uh, they're corrected for the day's dollars, right? They're all the same dollar CPI or whatever that is called. They're corrected for to equal the same amounts. But these are all the billion-dollar disasters that have happened from the eighties till now. Uh, and what you can see is the trend, right? In, in the decade of the eighties, we had thirty-three. But if you look in twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three, we had twenty-eight billion-dollar disasters. So that's just showing us the trend for these huge natural disasters, which we see here, right? We have flooding, we have tornadoes, we have ice storms, all of that. They're increasing, and they're increasing in money, right? Um, it, it was interesting, so I had to share, but that's essentially why this happened. And it began in two thousand five. The U.S. Conference of Mayors endorsed this agreement, this plan. Uh, and it was based on the Kyoto Protocol. I don't know if you guys recall that, but that was also in two thousand five. Uh, this was under Mayor Harrelson, and he signed the document in two thousand five as well. And then you guys tasked E-CAB to review, make a plan, and update it over time. Uh, the formal recommendations were presented in two thousand seven and then were adopted by council in two thousand nine under Mayor Rosenbaum. In, um, two thousand eighteen, Mayor Miller said, hey, you guys, you know, it's been a long time. It's been about nine years, maybe you should review it again. So E-CAB went back through the document again, reviewed, made more updates, and that was in two thousand eighteen. And that was under Mayor Miller. So let's jump into the document itself. Originally, there were twelve elements that were put in there for energy conservation and to reduce, um, the greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, now there are ten. Things have been pulled together to make it more efficient, make it flow a little better. You might see more updates in the next five-year cycle. We'll see. Action item one was inventory of greenhouse gas emissions. You may recall that one update that I gave was very excited, because we had an intern who did our greenhouse gas emission inventory, right? And in your packet, you have the mayor's climate protection agreement from this year. You have the one from two thousand eighteen. You have the original document from two thousand oh-five. And you also have the, um, the actual greenhouse gas emission inventory, if you want to go in and really dig in. This is just some basic stuff about it. Greenhouse gases are heat-trapping gases, if you will. There are things like methane, uh, it could be nitrous oxide, things like carbon dioxide, those kinds of things. We had our baseline emission inventory in two thousand. I want to say, um, I'm gonna preface all of it with the fact that the two thousand inventory was a little basic, right? We didn't have the same knowledge that we have today about how to collect those metrics. So the reduction that is shown here is actually probably greater because we did not include the traffic signals that, uh, actually we transformed into LED traffic signals by two thousand eleven. When you make that transition, you can reduce your consumption by ninety percent. So the original number does not have traffic signals in it. So as you can see on bullet point number two or one, our emissions decreased per capita by twenty-seven percent in that two thousand five to two thousand twenty-one. Uh, it's way more, and the reason that it's way more is because we didn't include those traffic signals. So that, but there are other, there are other types that probably didn't get included. Uh, the comparison, of course, was two thousand twenty-one. Two thousand twenty-one? Why didn't you use two thousand twenty? Who can tell me why we didn't use two thousand twenty?
It got a little mad.
It was a man house, right? So two thousand twenty-one is probably more of a representative year for, uh, what we do, and that's why we chose two thousand twenty-one. The forecast year is two thousand twenty-six, and that's also when we're recommended to do the next update for the greenhouse gas emission inventory. Um, street lights and traffic lights, like I said, they're, it's amazing how much lower it is than other cities, and that's because really, your public works department, hey, Scott, they're amazing. They went in and they changed all that already. And not just traffic signals, because now we're doing street lamps too, right? It's, it's really good. Um, the water reclamation facility, this is huge. They decreased their energy's consumption or emissions by eighty-eight percent. That was huge, and the reason for that is because we had those phase-two improvements that you guys voted in. Thank you. Uh, you know, that's a big deal. And the top three recommendations are that we complete this inventory every five years with this methodology. The intern, her name was Rachel Koch, not Coke, it's Koch, I accidentally called her Coke, it's Koch. Rachel Koch, uh, she created a methodology, and she told us where to get the data and how to use it and how to put it in, so that now, when we'd come back in two thousand twenty-six, we're gonna be apples to apples, and that's gonna be huge. Um, we also want to continue the creation of renewable-friendly dedicated parking spaces throughout Norman. You guys have already made that a priority. We passed the ordinance, we've put in EV charging stations. So that's, that's really exciting. Um, I do want to show you that the top graph right here, these are the types of gases in the nation that comprise emissions. So you have mostly carbon dioxide naturally, right, because we breathe out carbon dioxide. Uh, but also methane, which is eighty times more heat-trapping than carbon dioxide. Uh, NOx or nitrous oxides and other gases. And here are the list of the, um, the places, the places that they come from, the sources, thank you, emission sources. This is from Norman's emission inventory. You can see that the majority of our emissions are also carbon dioxide, but we still have a pretty good substantial amount of methane too. And remember what I said, it's eighty times more heat-trapping than carbon dioxide and then nitrous oxide. And these are our sources. The majority came from, and again, it's mostly because we do have this methane, uh, from the wastewater treatment and then buildings and facilities. Luckily, your buildings and facilities, folks, are also on top of it, and we're doing energy audits and assessments to try to get that down to. The action item two is to adopt and enforce land policies, right? And when they're talking about this, what, what we are talking about really are those land policies that encourage the use of things like nature-based solutions, um, that encourage growth in a way that doesn't create sprawl, that doesn't, um, uh, it encourages low-impact development and nature-based solutions. That's what I'm trying to say. So it, it manages growth in a way that won't, um, create the same kinds of urbanization issues that we see, uh, in core Norman, for instance. And you keep those ecosystem benefits. These are pretty big words. So what do I mean? I mean that when you have grass and trees and the natural environment, you get certain benefits from those things, and those are things like stormwater management, climate regulation. You get things like, um, wildlife and habitat, pollination, et cetera. When we have land-use policies that, that value those kind of ecosystem benefits, then it actually works all around. Um, the top, the accomplishments, the aim Norman, that's a huge undertaking, guys. Wow, but, but look at what we're gonna accomplish when we finally get it done, you know? We're gonna take these new ideas that we have, put it into this plan for growth all over and throughout all kinds of stuff, and then, you know, actually have a way to move forward, um, that helps us all and keeps, keeps our resources so we can have that growth. I'm sorry. All right, you guys also revise the C, the Center City Form-Based Code. Uh, and with that, we found that to be a really good, uh, thing, because you have a wide variety of housing types now that's allowed, and you also eliminated, uh, the maximums, unit maximums. Uh, they also appreciated the fact that we've kept the rural nature of East Norman with the lot-size requirements, because again, like I said, that, that natural or nature, uh, vegetation is really what I'm saying. Their top three recommendations to adopt and enforce land-use policies that do reduce sprawl. So that would be something that's more like densifying the urban area, uh, that create and preserve open space. So all the things we've been talking about in, like, strong towns or that kind of thing, that's the kind of thing that, that, that we're talking about. I'm sorry. Refine the Center City Form-Based Code to enhance walkable and bikeable areas of core Norman. You, we've been doing that a lot already. They just want to improve it with safety in mind too, because sometimes people who are riding their bicycles, it's a little more dangerous for pedestrians and bicyclists, right? So, uh, considering that and finding ways that we can keep safety in there so that... Thank you, thank you. Maybe the cold water will help.
You got the same energy level, though.
Do I? Because I really don't.
You are doing great.
Mr. Hackler gave me one. Thank you. I know, I'm sorry. And then also, um, we really want to expand it and refine the development rules to prioritize nature-based solutions, you know? I say that word a lot, nature-based solutions. Before, it was low-impact development, green infrastructure, green stormwater infrastructure, whatever the words you want to use, but really what it means is treating infrastructure like nature would, okay? So instead of throwing in traditional gray concrete and pipe, maybe we do it a little different. Maybe we put in some bio swells, maybe we have green parking, maybe we have smaller, whatever. There are many, many, many ways to accomplish it. And what E-CAB is saying is just let's put that formulaic and, and actually maybe require it. On three, promoting alternative transportation. We do that great already, and they did say we have some great, uh, accomplishments, right? We have great bike trails, don't we? Um, we also have a wonderful transit system. I mean, look at Embark, right? And we just went through that huge overhaul to optimize it, so that's exciting. Um, we have sidewalk improvements and installations that are expanding all over. Uh, we see that all the way. There's that huge sidewalk that goes all the way almost to Lake Thunderbird off Highway four. That's amazing. Um, and then what about your commitment to, to embark? You have, we do. Uh, and we should, we should keep that, right? Look at the cool transit center we have now, where people can go and catch a bus and go wherever they need. That's amazing. I love it. Um, so what can we do to keep going? Well, continue supporting Embark, right? That makes sense. Um, maybe we find a way to bring routes out to southeast Norman where we're having a huge amount of growth. Wouldn't it be nice to be able to get those folks to town without having to drive their cars? Uh, continual bicycle, like I said, expansion with an eye to safety. And then, yes, we have Legacy Trail within the twenty-fourth and UMP area, but folks would like to see an expansion of a bike trail along that, especially as you move up north, so that folks can access those, those businesses. So that was their top three. All right, renewable energy and efficiency. This is, this is exciting to me, of course, right? Because you saw, well, here you can see him right here. We already have two solar projects, right? One's at the water treatment plant and one's at the water reclamation facility. Those are our two big consumers of energy, right? What a great way. That was huge. Thank you. Um, we have EG EV charging stations throughout Norman, right? You've seen them out before. They're, they're everywhere. Um, we have, oh, yeah, did you know this? Norman Public Schools. Wow, you knew they had put in a solar garden. I know, because I saw somebody there when we did the opening. But they created an entire energy use guideline, right? And that's what they follow now to help them promote energy conservation and reliance on renewables. That's huge. Their expand, that, what do they recommend? We need to, they would like us to create, and I could see this actually being a really cool thing, because what if we could employ our own people to do this? And a renewable energy employment initiative, you know? We always talk about having jobs for, for folks and good jobs. That's, that's a great way to do it. Um, you know that, uh, well, you know, because we've talked about it. We're gonna do a solar, uh, a solar initiative in Norman. You know, wouldn't it be cool if we had workers who were doing it and we could, they would be paid and they kept all the money in our city? Yes, that sounds good to me. Uh, encourage installation on solar panels on private homes, businesses, municipal buildings, and work with HOAs to reduce the, the laws that they can't put them on. Did you, that's crazy, right? It just blows my mind. Or find a way that we can put them on. Maybe it's not this way. Maybe it's gotta look this way. How can we revise those? How can HOAs revise those? Obviously, we can't. That's a private thing. Um, I'm excited, because I think we're gonna hit this as we do the Solarize Initiative, so that's pretty exciting. Uh, and then request, this is, this is important, request utility companies to purchase back that power that's generated. Uh, they don't do that now, right? Your, your bill goes to zero, but they don't buy it back. And then, if we're gonna do that, we might as well talk to them about keeping an eye on the pricing structure, right? Smart hours, you guys know that. It's more expensive during the day. Well, that's when we're creating energy, so we should get paid more if we're giving it to them. That's all I'm saying. Or that's all E-CAB is saying. Sustainable building practices. So these are those practices. Let me get a drink. I feel as if about to be one of those. All right, sorry. These are those practices within buildings themselves, right? Um, so did you know in Norman, we have twenty-three LEED-certified buildings? Twenty-three in Norman. Four of those are ours. Um, this is fire station number eight. It's fire station number eight, number nine, the east side library and central library are all LEED-certified. And then there are nineteen others that are not us, so other entities. A lot of them are OU, but some of them are private entities that went ahead and had their building LEED-certified. Wouldn't it be great if everyone did that? Well, I know that's a little hyperbolic, hyper, whatever, it's out of, it's a dream. But what if we could celebrate that, you know? And that's some of the things I'm thinking about. Um, you know that the engineering design criteria was updated, because you guys voted for it, and we have chapter seven thousand. I love chapter seven thousand, right? That's green infrastructure, stormwater solutions. I love it. And that you can see a copy of the, the first page. Uh, the building codes, you guys, you updated all our building codes, right? To two thousand eighteen or higher, just one, one notable exception. Uh, the, the energy conservation code is still two thousand six. But I will say, well, it's one of the recommendations, so let me say that. The recommendation is to adopt the most current energy conservation code, okay? I will say that, uh, talking with Greg in code, uh, hi, Jay. He said that, um, that he works, they work with the Oklahoma, it's the Uniform Building Code. Yeah, it's the state agency that does building codes. And right now, right now, they're actually reviewing the two thousand eighteen International Energy Conservation Code. That's huge, right? Because that means the whole state might be coming up to that. And we would rather do that. I, I know, and this man, sorry, guys, but it's better, I think personally, this is my personal opinion, if we don't try to bring our code up above what everybody's doing in the state, because then you're gonna tell people, let's say, a school, they're gonna build a school in Shawnee. Uh, so they come over here and they want to build a school here. Well, guess what? Now all your plans are out, because you have to change the way that you put the insulation in, and then you're gonna have to do lighting design and all that. I think it, it would just be a much harder task. So let's encourage, and that's what your code folks are doing. Did you know they sit on some of those boards even? And they are lobbying and encouraging the adoption of these higher standards, so that's exciting. Um, encourage review and use of principles and standards from programs like LEED, the Living Building Challenge, and Energy Star, et cetera. So what does that mean? That just means maybe we say to folks, designers, architects, engineers, hey, have you guys looked at these particular standards from LEED or Living Build, can you meet some of those? And, you know, maybe we include an incentive with that, like, it doesn't have to be monetary. What if we did recognition? You know, that's an incentive too. Anyway, some ideas. And then this second bullet point, if we raise the code to the IEC two thousand eighteen, it will be met. But in the meantime, we can encourage folks to do some of these higher standard stuff, uh, like putting in a higher R number on the insulation or putting in a more efficient HVAC system or something like that, lighting, windows, that kind of thing. Uh, we do have the HERS incentive that you guys know, and that was changed. So they actually increased that. So that is a standard that we have that's increased. The benchmark was sixty-five, now it's fifty-seven. The lower the number, the better for energy conservation. So that's, that's something. Action item number six, municipal fleet vehicles. Uh, guess what happened? We got fifteen hybrid police cars, fifteen added to our fleet. That's huge, right? Now, I will say, only thirteen are here so far. It takes a while. I can attest to this, because I bought a hybrid. Takes a while to get one, uh, so two are on their way, all right? But that's exciting. Um, we also have, and I cannot praise your fleet group enough. And why am I saying that? Because your fleet head, uh, Mike White, he is constantly looking for and at alternative fuel sources, ways that we can make things more efficient, what vehicles, what technology. He has his finger on that pulse, and that's, that's good. You want your fleet guy to do that if you're looking to reduce emissions from gasoline-powered vehicles, right? We have an existing one hundred thirty-three CNG, right? It's amazing. I agree. Uh, we have a hundred and thirty-three CNG vehicles right now and the two EV buses, right? Um, installation of EV chargers at fleet and other public places. This is the map you saw it when we had the cost overrun. Um, really hopeful. We should hear from, this is an aside. We should hear from ACOG pretty soon about whether or not we got the other grant for the other three EV chargers. But that's exciting. I mean, that's, that's big, guys. All right, what are the recommendations? Continue what we're doing. You'll see most of these are continue, because you got, we're already doing a great job. Um, but continue to monitor and explore alternative fuel technologies. There are other stuff coming. There's other stuff coming. It's not just gonna be, you know, EVs or maybe, what about hydrogen? That's something that's on the, on the horizon. Uh, continue to implement or invest in alternative fuel infrastructure, which you guys already do, you know? And Mike's already talked about how he wants to change the whole fuel island to include ways of these alternative fuels, if we can, you know, in the future. And then implement an internal education program so that, you know, we can talk to each other about reducing... And then implement an internal education program so that, you know, we can talk to each other about reducing uh, idling and reducing fuel consumption and how we can go about doing that. So efficiencies at the water and wastewater. Now, I'm gonna just say that this says wastewater, but you know how I feel. There is no wastewater, right? No, there's one water. So I would say efficiencies at water and water reclamation facilities. Okay, anyway, purchases of higher efficiency motors, I'm gonna tell you, you're alright, I know I keep bragging on this stuff, but I am so, every time I meet somebody, well, maybe not every time. But most times I meet somebody, it's like, wow, you really are amazing. You really are great. Thank you for being in our city. Um, but your two heads of your two plants, they're, they really are. They look at these things. Sorry, Rachel, I'm gonna throw you up. They look at, where can we find these savings in energy? And, you know, it's because it's the right thing, but it's also because they are fiscally responsible with our residents' money, you know, that's huge. Um, anyway, I'm really proud of them. We have solar projects at both of the facilities, uh, the phase two plant upgrades at both. I mean, some of that changed and some of the changes were eh, maybe we don't need energy, let's make it gravity. Brilliant. Yes, gravity. Then we're not paying to do it, right? Anyway. Hmm, top three recommendations. Installation of a covered area for storage of de-water sludge. So let me explain what I mean by that. We have a de-watering process. It can do so much. What they're recommending is that we have a place to store the sludge while it's being de-watered, so that we can do a whole bunch of it before we send the load for efficient transportation of the load. Alright, uh, devise a new method for using, devise a new method for using recovered methane at the pri- as a primary fuel source for the boilers. So we've used it, but there are problems with it, right? And right now, we use it as we can, but with, you know, when it gets cold, you can, or this happens or that, so we primarily, yes ma'am?
Is it that flare recapture?
Yes, yes. So, but sometimes we can use it, sometimes we can't for the boilers. And then we end up depending on natural gas. Instead, what if we could just capture that? And I know we've had issues, but there's gotta be a way. People do it in other places, right? Capture that and use it. Please, let's do it. Yes. Um, if we can. Explore more efficient biogas generation at the Wharf and alternative funding sources for implementation. Remember what I said about, I keep saying methane, but this is another thing, right? Methane is eighty times more heat trapping than carbon dioxide. It's, even if it's smaller amount out there, it's still a huge effect. So if we can capture that methane before it goes into the atmosphere, we're gonna make a huge difference, and it's gonna show in our metrics. We've looked at it, I'm not, it's not like we haven't investigated it. We have with lots of different companies too, at least three that I can think of off the top. But they, we can keep investigating. I think that's the key. And eventually, I believe we're gonna find a solution for it. Somebody's gonna want that. It's good gas. It's gas. Never mind. Recycling in the city, uh, and the community. So what I wanna say about this before, oh, there's one other thing I wanted to say about water and wastewater, and I should've said it while I was talking about it. The biggest way that we can reduce the energy use there is if we reduce consumption, right? So, that would be a huge thing too. Alright, now back to this. So when we're talking about recycling, you know I love recycling. I have the household hazardous waste facility. I'm constantly in Brett's ear talking about it. We're always working on, cause I love it. It's, it's sucking. It's a great way to pull stuff out of the waste stream. But, is it really fantasy that we think? Is it really the end all be all? You know, it's not. It's a tool, but the end all be all would be if we did what we should do, and that's refuse. Refuse, reduce our consumption, reuse what we have, then recycle, and rot the rest. Rot by compost is what I mean. Anyway, with that said, let's get back to this. Um, we've established the household hazardous waste facility. I'm very excited about that. It's, it's pretty nice, I think. Um, and we're gonna do some expansions, so that's exciting. Uh, eighty-eight percent curbside participation rate in two thousand twenty-two, that's big. A lot of towns don't have that kind of participation rate. Uh, we had diversion of twenty-seven and a half percent of the entire waste stream. So that means about a third, a little less than a third, of our entire waste stream was diverted from the landfill for use in other things, whether it's compost or mulch at the household hazardous waste facility or recycling. I know, I'm sorry. I can see your pain, but I'm sorry.
Workers, Tom.
And that was me falling on my butt yesterday in the burn line. It was funny. I'll have to show a video someday. Um, top three recommendations. We need to work to reduce our contamination rate. Our contamination rate in Norman is outrageous. And I think a lot of it is actually wish cycling, wish recycling, if you will. So what is that? You know that we can take ones and twos plastics, paper and carpet, bring it. Good gosh, I can recycle all that you give me. People, there is a market. Bring it, bring it, bring it. They're constantly eating it. They want it, want it, want it. We don't have a market right now for three through seven. We have a market for glass. If you bring it to the kiosk at the, at the transfer station. But there isn't one for, um, like, our contractor, for big companies. So, what we need to do is focus on teaching people. Bring us what we can recycle. Bring us all that we can recycle, and the rest, don't, don't even put it in there, please. And wash your plastics before you put them in the, uh, in the can. Just a tiny bit of food or grease or something in there that contaminates, it ruins the whole load. The whole load's trashed, you know? If we can get that recycling, our contamination rate down from what it's like twenty-eight percent now, to the national average of eighteen percent. Think about the good that we're actually gonna do, you know? We need to explore and implement opportunities for apartment and business. I know you guys agree, right? We all wanna do that. Hopefully, we can do that, you know? We have some changes coming. Wouldn't that be cool? I hope we can, fingers crossed. Um, and then work to improve recycling rates. Eighty-eight percent is great. What if we had a hundred?
A plus, dude.
Exactly. Eighty, it's okay. Hundreds, A plus. Maintaining healthy urban ecosystems. I'm just gonna show you. Look at the street. Isn't this amazing? Isn't that beautiful? That is a gorgeous street. That is in Trailwoods, Trailwoods addition. So what happened in Trailwoods? We had, we partnered with OU and Ideal Homes, and guess what? They designed a paired watershed, a street on one side, designed exactly the same way with different types of infrastructure. And then they monitored. How cool was that? And look, it's beautiful, and if you look at the final report, which if anybody wants it, let me know and I'll send it to you, that, it made a difference. You could see a difference in what the, the out, the effluent, the the discharge from each side and how they were different from the low impact or nature based solutions. And those were just simply things like bioswells in the front. Uh, ra- uh, rain cisterns or rain barrels at the, that, that was about it. It really wasn't that much involved. No curb, you see it runs right in. So you hired a full-time forester in March twenty-two, and I'll tell you what. I like the, I like Colin. He's really great. He does a lot. I've worked on a lot of, uh, stuff with him, and he's excited. Um, you have done, oh, well, we've done several capstone designs, right? You guys remember the presentation not too long ago from the Menopons, where they were trying to transform those into treatment wetlands? We've also done a lot with graduate research efforts, right? I mean, you guys know what's going on at the Wharf, right? Have you been down there? I know Helen asked, she came. Anybody else? Have you seen the mesocosms? You should come down. Sorry, Ms. Grant, I didn't mean to call you by your first name. I don't mean to call anybody by their first name. Sometimes it just happens. But, come see them, the mesocosms. That's what Dr. Bob Nairn's doing to see if we can treat stormwater and effluent from our water reclamation facility to a degree that it's good enough that maybe we can go back to indirect potable reuse. We've gotta have mu- we've gotta have water if we're gonna have people, and we're gonna have people. People are here, people are gonna come. Norman's a great town. Who doesn't wanna live here, right? Um, and if they, nevermind. I think it's awesome. What are their top recommendations? Update the forestry master plan and the community. Update the forestry master plan and the community forest management plan. Now, this is already underway, so that's exciting. I think we might actually meet this in the next year. That's good. Uh, redefine, refine the EDC to actually explicitly call out nature based solutions and encourage their use, if not require them in certain areas. Um, and then increase and improve interdepartmental coordination on projects. So what does that mean? That means, you know, sometimes we can get silent, right? You know, utilities might sit over here in utilities. Public Works might be over there, planning over here. What if we had a, you know, an, an interdepartmental collaboration to where we could say, hey? And we kinda do that now with DRT. I think what they're talking about is just expanding that and making sure that when projects are done, that everybody agrees that it's exactly the way that everybody thought. And then finally, public education, because you can't give behavior change if people don't know what they're supposed to do, right? That's huge. You will say that we've had a lot of pretty good successes, right? We collaborate a lot with outside experts. These fo- huh, I love these pictures. So this is LEAF, remember LEAF? The, um, Learning and Environmental Advancement Facility out by the Wharf. And right here at the top, that is a compost bin workshop that we did at LEAF with, um, uh, well, the guy's name is Leaf. How about that? But anyway, so we could teach residents how to build their own compost bins. We did both a hot bin and a cold bin. And it was a good experience. They got hands-on experience and we got, we got a compost bin, right? So that's exciting. Below, guess what that is? Yes, there's the bees, right? Okay, I feel better writing about bees. Um, we haven't done classes yet, but that's coming this spring, so that's very exciting. Uh, oh, and I may have honey to share. Alright, um, what are your rec- whatever the recommend, oh. Have you looked at the website? Cause we have a lot more environmental content on there as well. So they, they appreciated that. And then, boy, Tiffany Vrska, right? Can I get an amen? Let me just say, she has really increased the amount of presence that you see social media wise with environmental stuff. Yay. Um, so what do they recommend? Employ or contract with a public education professional to expand, uh, and enhance current efforts. That I do a lot, but you know, I'm only one person, I only have schmolda. So it'd be nice to have, you know, somebody who's good at it and could do it all the time, yeah. Um, expand environmental content on website, constantly working on that. It is, that's a working pro, right? Cause somebody's gotta sit there and do it. So, but I do, but yes, that's, that's good, and I'm gonna listen. Uh, and then develop and implement a strategy to utilize social media to promote environmental content. And I think with this action item, what they're talking about is to actually sit down and have a written strategy, like a marketing strategy. These are the things we can do. This is the kind of, of content, et cetera. Um, and guys, that's about it. That is your mayor's climate protection agreement. With that, I would entertain some questions.
Um, so how much of this do we work with or could we participate with our neighbors at OU? Since we're in the backyard of, you know, a big energy building and a lot of knowledgeable minds.
One hundred percent. And that, I'm glad you said that, Ms. Borman. Cause a lot of what they were saying with the collaboration with those outside experts, they're the ones, right? They're the outside. Leif, Leif Olsen, he's from OU, right? Dr. Nairn, we work with him a lot. He's from OU. Dr. Vogel, OU. Yeah, Dr. Schusler, she's from OSU. So yes, one hundred percent. I know, but they still do a lot. I understand. But no, that one hundred percent. And in fact, uh, we do have, for instance, talking about wetland treatment systems, et cetera. We have a call, monthly call where we all get together and talk about that kinda stuff, so, absolutely. Does that answer your question?
Does indirect potable reuse, like, enter these updates too? Uh, are we still, do they recommend working towards that?
So what they said, I don't think they said it directly in the top threes, but it's in the, it's in the documents, because we need water. Um, it does fit in, and why does it fit in? Because the treatment wetlands that we would put in place to help treat some of that effluent um, coming out of the Wharf would actually help with the other ecosystem benefits too.
Do we compare ourselves to any other cities? Do we have a comparator scale? I know ACOG has one on emissions, but it's not by individual cities, by the MSA.
It's the MSA, exactly.
And so if we're participating, are we helping, we think?
We're helping. No, we are, and that's, right, that's why we tend to be looked at favorably um, when we apply for grants at ACOG, because we do contribute. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Um, so you mentioned the water reclamation facility decreased emissions by eighty-eight percent.
Energy, from energy.
From energy, but it still makes up forty-eight percent of our total.
Yes, sir.
Which is, yeah, almost half of all. So impressive, but still a lot we could do.
There's work to do, yeah.
But interesting to note, that's the number one source. Especially since there are neighborhoods down there, and there are projects proposed in that area for residential.
That's true.
Um, so I think that's something to think about. You know, what is the impact on residents to be located next to a high emissions place like that, so.
Do you mean odor emissions?
Well, uh, that was one of my questions, but just like the other health effects, potentially living next to a play, a facility like that that emits a lot of emissions, but, um, with the the sludge cover, covering, was that something that would address smell or help with smell?
Not necessarily, because dry sludge, when, once you dry the sludge, the, the odor is minimal. Um, really what it would be is more of an efficiency thing, because you're collecting more before you haul it off to get rid of it. Um, you, have you guys been, a lot of you've been to the Wharf, right?
Yeah.
Um, it, it's really
I need to go back.
Surprisingly, not very odorless. I mean, you know, I mean, some days you get there and you're like, oh, yeah, smells like money.
I think the compost is the, is the one that's more of a
Compost definitely has a, an interesting, almost, I would say nitric urea kinda smell to it, but again, money, smells like money.
Much fewer complaints than I used to get about it, um. The
That's not what mine smells like.
That's for a waste, for a water reclamation facility out there.
The, um, the fifteen hybrid police cars does not include the nineteen that we approved a budget for this past June.
Correct.
And those, I assume those will all be the same type of hybrid vehicles probably. So we'll have nineteen more. So that'd be getting close.
That's thirty-four.
Well, it's getting close to probably half the fleet of police cars.
Fifty-five, there are fifty-five police cars, A-five, sorry.
The availability of canoe to be manufactured here in Oklahoma. Uh, they brought over a, a vehicle for, uh, Mike White and our fleet folks to, uh, evaluate and uh, they're gonna have offerings that cost less than your typical, you know, like a S-ten pickup or a Ford Ranger pickup. Uh, and the service interval, you, you check tire pressure and brakes every twelve thousand miles, and that's kinda it. So we can gain capacity in the shop. Save money on the purchase of a vehicle and have a lot more flexibility. Most of the fleet never leaves town and never hits fifty miles an hour. So, we, we definitely are looking at different solutions that are more cost effective and more fitting to the task at hand.
And we track how hybrids compare to our existing fleet vehicles as far as gas saving, fuel savings and things like that, so we know.
Fleet totally collects all of that data, which was very helpful. Thank you again, um, with the greenhouse gas emission inventory.
Perfect. And then, um, I think that's, yeah, that's all the ones I had. Sounds like a pretty good report to me, though. Making a lot of progress.
I was so glad that we actually had, cause you know, we haven't looked at greenhouse gas emissions since two thousand. I was like, oh no. And, um, if you look nationally, the, it went up for a while, and then it finally came down. But, um, I was like, oh no, I hope, I hope we have anything. Twenty-seven percent per capita. That's, that's a deal. I'm okay with that. I'm good with that. We need to do more. I mean, we need to do more, but that's, that's a path.
And was, were you the intern that did?
No.
There was a different Rachel?
This is Rachel Croft. Rachel Koch.
Okay, okay, perfect.
Yeah, Koch. I said it, I almost said Koch. Koch. She, she now lives in Norman.
I was wondering if you did such a good job that they hired you on permanent staff.
She's a
Alright, anything else for Michelle?
Thank you.
Keep it moving, Michelle.
Well, keep your eyes open, guys, cause a lot's coming. I'm very excited. Alright.
We all get bronchitis.
Don't you mind, because I am not contagious.
Those are famous last words. Those are famous last words.
Stay home, always, promise.
Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of January 23rd, 2024. Madam Clerk, we call a roll, please.
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Montoya?
Present.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Heikala?
I am here. Thank you, ma'am. Would you join me? Oh, I'd like to make an announcement before we get started. No, I'm not. Let's do the break for ladies. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, I'd like to make an announcement before we get started. Item 26, the purchase of the property on Hutner Drive, has been withdrawn by staff, so there will be no discussion of it tonight. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Approval of the City Council Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting minutes of March 24th, 2022 as follows. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion. Second, the motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number two, proclamation. Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of February 2024 as Black History Month in the City of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of this proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of February 2024 as Black History Month in the City of Norman. Whereas, since its origin in 1926 by the father of Black History, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, in his pursuit to raise awareness of African Americans' contribution to civilization, Black History Week began and evolved into Black History Month. And whereas 2024's national theme, African Americans in the Arts, in the fields of visual and performing arts, literature, fashion, folklore, language, film, music, architecture, culinary arts, and other forms of cultural expression. And whereas the Black Liberated Arts Center in Oklahoma City is using art and history to provide the total community of Oklahoma with an exposure to the African, African Black culture, with the emphasis on educating Oklahoma's youth, is celebrating 50 years of community service. And whereas the Nationally Black Arts Foundation in Atlanta, Georgia, is celebrating 35 years of providing quality artistic and educational programs that support the arts and artists of African descent and is a champion of equality throughout the arts. And whereas the Alliance of Black Employees, a City of Norman Employee Resource Group, established in 2021, also provides support and representation to the Black community in Norman while providing non-Black communities an opportunity to learn the Black experience, to better understand diverse perspectives. And whereas the Norman Human Rights Commission continues to work to dispel prejudice and discrimination and to advance fairness, mutual understanding, and appreciation for the worth of all people. Now, therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2024 as Black History Month in the City of Norman and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating the diversity and character of our community. I'd like to recognize Mrs. Saskia Ofe to join us up in front, please. Would you like to say some words?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, my name is Saskia Ofe. I'm the president of Norman High B.S.U. I want to thank the City Council, and I want to thank the mayor for giving me this opportunity. And my officers, Norman High B.S.U. officers, extend your greetings to everyone. In accordance with Black History Month, Black Student Union is going to be hosting a showcase to showcase Black culture and diversity, and we're going to invite the schools around the metro area, and we're going to have the Divine Night. So we're also extending our invite to everyone here today, and it's free to the community. And thank you again, and good evening.
Thank you. I would also like to recognize Cher Duncan and Nick Lillard from the Norman Arts Council who are with us here tonight. Are they here? Oh, in the back? Thank you for being here. All right. Next item on the agenda is council announcements. Councilmember Ball, would you like to start?
Sure. Don't have many. I've talked to Chief King and Chief Foster over the weekend. Been an extremely busy time for them. Yeah, I was trying to find my email here, but I think my laptop's not working, so. But just a few safety tips that they asked me to share. I think they responded to close to 500 emergency calls just over this last weekend dealing with everything from slips and falls to exposure to just everything they do to keep our citizens safe. So if you see them, tell them thank you. And just a few of the safety tips they asked me to share. If you haven't already signed up on the city website, you can sign up for emergency weather alerts, street closures, traffic accidents, things like that. Let's see. You can always go to OK Warn for your national emergency. Emergency management officials advise layering clothing and protecting the skin and eyes from extreme elements. And make sure you keep your animals safe. And I looked at the 10-day. It doesn't look like we have any extreme weather coming up. So, but it's Oklahoma, so we'll probably get our biggest ice storm about March 1st. So just keep all these things in mind, and I know they're looking forward to that now. So, but that's all I have, so.
Councilmember Schuler?
I have no announcements.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Well, good evening, Norman, Oklahoma, and Ward 3. I just have a few things, mostly, you know, calendar items. So this Thursday is going to be an exciting, busy day. So one, there is the 48th Annual Chili Supper benefiting Cleveland County Christmas Store. And if you've not had our First Responders Chili, it is absolutely amazing. Then, also on Thursday, the League of Women Voters is hosting the City Council Forum here in these chambers. And then we have an election coming up, February 13th, for the Norman School Board. So even though Ward 3, it is not our time to vote for City Council members, but you do get to vote for the Normans School Board. So make a plan to vote on February 13th. Then absentee in-person voting starts February 9th and February 10th, I believe, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Cleveland County Election Board. So, and that's really all I have. Thank you all for being here.
Good evening, Ward 4 in City of Norman. Friday, January 29th is the last day to request an absentee ballot to vote in the February 13th City Council election, and that's for our even wards. Do you have a voting plan? If not, you can go to www.vot411.org to sign up for personalized voting information. You will be sent info about what's on your ballot. Check your voter registration. Find your polling place. Discover upcoming debates in your area, like the one we'll have on Thursday. We also have an art walk on February 9th, and those run from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. February 10th, we have our annual Norman Mardi Gras Parade at 7:00 p.m. This year's theme is Dancing with Dragons. And then we're in a budget cycle, so budget requests can be sent to ward4@normanok.gov by January 29th. That's this Friday. Already, I've received some requests for sidewalk and colorful crosswalks, among other things. And while there's only so much in the general fund, still please send your requests, because there might be alternative ways to fund that. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
No announcements this week, thank you.
Councilmember Foreman?
Okay, just a couple things. Ward 6, as you know, I'm not seeking reelection. So on Thursday, I will actually be here for the League of Women Voters to see our candidates for Ward 6, kind of talk about city issues. So it'd be a good opportunity for you to watch on YouTube or come into the chambers at 6:30 p.m. And then the election is February 13th. And then Chief Foster, I see you out there, if you're listening. Chief Foster, hey. So I just, I want to give a little story. Just follow me for a second. So last month, everyone knows the intersection of Tecumseh and Flood, right? That's how we, most of us get on the interstate. I was taking my daughter to school. It was like 20 degrees with like 30 mile per hour freezing winds. And I was working from home that day, and was a little flippant. And I had on some Nutcracker pajamas and some fuzzy house shoes and a Harry Potter jacket, and my car died. And fortunately, there was a cop, a couple cars behind me, and then he called someone, and they put like his cruiser in the middle of that intersection at 8 o'clock in the morning, and they pushed me across the street and on cue. Horrifying. They were very kind not to note the pajamas. So I appreciate that, and I just wanted to acknowledge them publicly. It was Sergeant Jason Brackage and Master Patrol Officer Spencer Steele. So thank you for coming to my rescue. My daughter thought that was the most amazing thing on the planet, that you pushed us. You pushed a car. So you were superheroes that day to her and to me. So, thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. Just a few things. Also wanted to encourage everyone to attend the, well, Thursdays, there is a few things going on. So in addition to the Chili Supper benefit at Norman High that happens every year at 5:30, and the Council Forum at 6:30, definitely encourage everybody to attend those and participate if you can. But at 4 o'clock here at City Hall, we'll be having the Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting, as we do the fourth Thursday of every month, where we get an update from city staff regarding public transit, ridership numbers, the budget, projects that we have upcoming for it. We also get updates from city staff on road construction projects. So if you have any comments or questions, suggestions, concerns about those types of things, please feel free to contact me directly or anybody on council. The meeting is also public and open to anybody and is livestreamed on the City of Norman's YouTube channel. And again, that's every month, the fourth Thursday of the month. So 4:00 p.m., so Thursday's a busy day. And then also wanted to mention the February 10th, the Red Dirt Collective Mutual Aid Fair. I think we had a pretty successful mutual aid fair last week. There'll be another one coming up at Irving Middle School on the 10th. It's hosted by RDC. So if you're somebody in the community that is in need of those types of things, getting connected with services, ID services, any of that type of stuff, this is, this mutual aid fair can help you out with that. Again, that's on February 10th. And then, as others have mentioned, Election Day on the 13th for the even-numbered wards in Norman. And as I've mentioned before, in local elections, every single vote can absolutely make the difference. We've had multiple elections for City Council in Norman over the years, decided by a dozen or more in that range votes. So in a city of 130,000 people, less than 1,000 votes total usually decides elections here. So it is vitally important that everybody go participate in that. A local election literally takes probably less than five minutes to walk into the polling place, cast a vote, and walk out. It's not like what you see on national elections where it's, you know, lines around the block. So it's quick, it's easy, and it makes a really big difference locally. And then also mention, everybody, put the Mardi Gras Parade on your calendars. It is the only Mardi Gras Parade in the state of Oklahoma, and it's their 30th anniversary, from what I understand. So get ready for that in downtown Norman on February 10th, 6:30 p.m. So it is a night parade, which makes even more fun. And then also wanted to mention, there was a pretty large fire in Ward 7 last week on Friday at an apartment complex. Multiple units were destroyed, and very quick response from our fire department. There's a fire station right near there, thankfully. And also some quick action by people that were around there. But some families were displaced, including a student at Madison, which is in Ward 7. So the Madison PTO posted on their Facebook page a GoFundMe link to help the mother and the student at Madison help recover from that. From what I understand, they lost everything, including some of their pets. So difficult time for them, and would encourage everybody to, if you are able to contribute anything financial-wise or just in material things that they may need, I think they would appreciate that a lot. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention, encourage everybody, because we've been going through the Strong Towns process, it's a publication I followed for a long time, but an article that was published recently by a local Norman resident, Adam Ross, about the value per acre of land from a retail standpoint, and how a downtown parcel can compare to a suburban Big Box store. So, and what that does for a community as far as building wealth and addressing things like housing shortages. So definitely encourage everybody to check that out. Thank you.
Councilmember Peacock?
Thank you. I just want to draw special attention to item number eight on tonight's agenda. That is actually a contract to design and install a pedestrian crossing at Ruby Grant Park across 36th Avenue. And I know this is something that Ward 8 residents have been asking ever since I was sworn into office, and it's something that was kind of waiting on the widening of 36th Avenue. But staff went ahead and found a way to fund a crosswalk here. And so I just want to give them a lot of kudos and a lot of thanks for the hard work, because I know this was something they've really had to rack their brains on figuring out. So appreciate it. Thank you.
And all I'd like to do is thank, you were done? Okay. Is thank staff and the employees and all the departments for doing a wonderful job during this last ice event and keeping, sometimes pushing cars, sometimes doing other things that just made life keep on going. And that's one of the wonderful things that I've always noticed about staff and the employees, is they're always here to help us and keep the city going. That's it. All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that item 3 through item 20 be placed on the consent docket. I need a motion to place items 3 through 20 on the consent docket.
Second.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to place items 3 through 20 on the consent docket. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to place items 3 through 20 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent docket.
I should approve. Second.
I have a motion and second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Hearing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmember, cast your vote.
My votes to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
All right. Item number 21 on non-consent. An ordinance rezoning property located at 463 Elm Avenue from R1, Single Family Dwelling District, to Spud, Simple Planned Unit Development District. Is there a motion on the floor to adopt? We have one on the floor? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Is there a representative of the applicant? Ah, hello, Mark.
Good evening. I'm Mark Crittenbrink with Crittenbrink Architecture. My address is 428 West Giffala. This proposal is exactly the same as it was before after our last meeting, our visit with Councilwoman Grant. And the concern was the Airbnb being allowed on both sites. And so we adopted, adapted, we changed, but to move the Airbnb status from the four-bedroom. So that's what you have in front of you. I can show you anything from that proposal, but that's the only change, is that the four-bedroom will not be allowed to be an Airbnb, and the three-bedroom will remain as that opportunity, although the owner questions whether he'll ever do it. I'm happy to answer questions.
That was easy.
Awesome. Thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on this item. Are there any members?
I have one person, Paul Wilson. Okay, never mind.
All right. Any final comments from council? Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that the applicants were willing to renegotiate so that the house on this property, or at least one of the houses on this property in the Spud, will be anchored by a long-term resident. And while it didn't really concern the neighborhood, it is something that this council is looking at long-term, and I don't think that getting rid of Airbnbs and all the Spuds makes the most sense. If we have fears about Airbnbs, we will be revisiting the Airbnb ordinance, so there will be opportunities there to address some of the fears that our community have around ones that may not be managed well or that are taking away from affordable housing stock. And, you know, I really appreciate that throughout this process, that the applicants worked with the neighborhood. That is something that this council also likes to see, and I feel like we get the best projects and some of the better conversations that you can have during this process with open and transparent negotiations. So thank you.
Anything further? No. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm 22. A resolution amending the Norman 2025 land, pardon? Did I skip a page? I'm trying to get it.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Item 22.
Please, you need to.
Oh, okay. I guess we got to do that. I need a motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
A motion and second.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. 22. A resolution amending the Norman 2025 land use and transportation plan to remove property located at 2281 36th Avenue Northwest from commercial designation and place the same in high-density residential designation. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second. I have a motion and second. Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
Good evening. Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the application. Items 22, 23, and 24 are all companion items. This, this is the adoption of the change in the land use and transportation plan is associated with a very small multifamily project, 36 units, located just south of Rock Creek and on the east side of 36th Avenue. At the Planning Commission, there was discussion. We agreed to add trees along the east side of our project on 20-foot centers, as well as change our unit mix. There was a request to add some one-bedroom units within the project, which my client did agree to. He modified his plans. We have incorporated those into the Spud, which is your item number 23. I'd be happy to answer any questions or show you any more about the project if you're interested. Otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions we'd asked for your approval.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. So the, currently the property is just a vacant, empty lot, a grass lot. There is a stormwater channel creek behind here, between here and the neighborhood along Buckhorn Drive. And you mentioned the trees. If I saw correctly, it's a 30-foot, 30 feet between the creek and the parking.
Yeah, there is a 30-foot easement on the east side of the property that will remain in its natural state. There are existing trees between the residential neighborhood and our property that will not be disturbed, and we are just adding additional trees along the east side of our parking lot.
Are you adding a fence to there at all, or on the edge of the parking, or anything like that, or just leaving it open?
Just leaving it open.
Okay. And then, I think, I had seen, I had seen the comments in planning about the unit mix. So I definitely appreciate the willingness to adapt and go with a few one-bedroom units. We've seen that that seems to be a big deficiency. We have a lot of four and three bedrooms, but not as many on the two and one bedroom. Was there anything else that was considered for this property that you know of?
We were not asked of anything else, so no, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peacock?
I'm just skipping down here to item 24 real quick. I know they're all related. It says that you guys are going to vacate a portion of an alley on the property. Can you just speak to that a little bit?
There's an existing alley. It runs along the east side of our property. It, it hindered the, it hindered the site as to not make the parking workout layout. So what we've done is just relocated that. We've obtained additional alley from the property owners to the north and south to transition that over through our parking so that that remains open, and we'll still allow 36th and Rock Creek to connect.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hello.
Councilmember Schuler?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the overlay of the site plan on kind of the current existing properties that are adjacent. And it looks like, I know that there's a gym that's just to the west. It looks like some of your property is being used for parking. Like, are you working with?
Yeah, we worked, we're working with the Health Club. The Health Club is very aware that they developed parking onto this lot, and we have coordinated with them, and they're aware of the changes.
Okay. And then just on the kind of the east side of their building, there's, you know, probably 10 or so parking that's going to be, I see, I don't, just don't know how they're going to get, you're going to get access with the building. So are those going to go away from there?
They will go away.
Okay. Just trying to understand the flow of the space.
Yeah, understood.
Anything more?
Madam Clerk, is, nobody has signed up? Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast, oh, you want to speak? I'm sorry?
I just wanted to mention, this is an example, I think, that we'd like to see more of, sort of odd-shaped pieces of property that are behind current developments, don't have the greatest access, but developing them into higher-density housing and making better use of the space. So this is definitely something I'd like to encourage others to think about, and hopefully we see more of. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the motion on the floor is to adopt. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 23. An ordinance rezoning property located at 2281 36th Avenue Northwest from C1, Local Commercial District, to Spud, Simple Planned Unit Development District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Second.
Motion and second. This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions, council? Seeing none? Any public comments?
I do have one from Paul Wilson. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 24. An ordinance closing a portion of a platted alley in lots 4 and 5, AKA Lot 5A, Block 1, Prairie Creek Edition, and acceptance of easements accommodating a new path for the alley. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and second. This is a companion item to the previous two items. Are there any further questions? Anybody from, hearing none. This is excellent. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, section by section, and accept the easements. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading and accept the easements.
So moved.
Second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading and accept the easements. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading and accept the easements passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 25. An ordinance granting special use for a bar, lounge, or tavern in C2, General Commercial District, for property located at 1235 West Main Street. I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
A motion and second. Is there a representative of the applicant?
Luke Greenfield, 1809 Oak Meadows Drive. I'm here to apply for a special use permit for the sale of wine and beer for our locate, our location at 1235 West Main Street, the Cruising Car Wash. The car wash challenge landscape has changed so, so much in the last five years. When I started in 2003, we were one of two car washes in Norman, Fast Lanes and Auto Valet. Both were locally owned. Through the years, the corporate car wash chains have moved into our area. Auto Valet went out of business years ago, leaving us the last locally-owned tunnel car wash in Norman. We have managed to sustain success over the years by being a part of the community and trying to offer more and more options. As the competition has gotten bigger and tougher each year, we strive to set ourselves apart from them. With the sale of beer and wine, as well as putting a nail salon in the near future, we are striving to be a special place that customers can go and relax while we take care of all their automotive maintenance needs. Many different business models have introduced alcohol sales in the past 10 years. We all know that the theater chains have implemented alcohol sales very successfully into their revenue streams. Whole Foods is one of several grocery stores, chains that are adding bars and brew pubs where shoppers can drink wine and beer while they shop. Albertsons and Kroger are among other companies testing the bar within a grocery store concept at select locations. More and more, it's becoming commonplace to be able to enjoy a drink responsibly at many businesses. I humbly ask for your approval on the special use zoning.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Schuler?
Yes. Hello again.
Hello.
So I know at the pre-development meeting, there were a couple of neighbors that were concerned. They had some issues with some things maybe not related to the special use. So I was just one, specifically about lighting. Were you able to work with them to address some of their concerns around that, or just like maybe explain what the, the lighting is? Because I think there was some like, they were thinking there was some light pollution coming from the property.
I actually invited them to come by the lot so we could discuss where their properties were and location to my lighting, because I wouldn't view the back alley of my property, and all my lights on the back of my building are directional lighting down. But I did notice that Bank of America, when they did away with their drive-through lanes, they installed bright LED panel lighting that literally points to the back. And they never came by, and we could never discuss it, but I was thinking it, it might be Bank of America that is causing their issue. But they never came by and spoke with me or my managers, so. But I'm still definitely open, like anytime they would like to stop by, well, I'll gladly go through the line.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I, I know that you were very open to, to working with them and addressing concerns. So I just was wondering where that stood. So I know that there were a number of questions that were asked at Planning Commission, but, and this actually might be for Ms. Hudson. Can you talk a little bit about the special use and how this might transfer to a new owner? I know that that's not the plan, that you're planning to be here and to be in the community and do this, but I know that was some of the concern that people had, was that this was going to potentially turn into, you know, a bar or something like that in the future. So can you talk about the restrictions around special use and how that might transfer to a new property owner, if that were the case?
Sure. Jane Hudson, Planning Director. You guys can get it closer to me. But the video can't. The video can't hear you if you don't talk into the microphone. Can you hear me? Is it better? Yeah. I know, right? Okay. Better. So the special use stays with the property. Should somebody else come in and want to operate the business there, we would do, they would come to us, and we would do a site inspection and make sure that the use that's on the property is, is consistent with what's adopted. There's a fee, I believe it's $150. I can look at that. But that would be transferred, and then that is also filed at the county, no different than this would be filed at the county. Once that's transferred, it would be filed with the new property owners as well.
So the new property owner would be beholden to what is currently outlined in this special use document, like you have with the hours and the way that you're going to provide the services. And there's also a site plan added to that, so any kind of substantial changes to a site plan would also have to come back to council.
Correct. I think they actually asked that also at the meeting, and yes, any changes to the site plan would, would have to come back for approval.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Ball?
On a personal note, one of my very first jobs here in Norman was working for Mr. Dwayne Hall alongside Mr. Greenfield here at Fast Lanes in 2003. So just knowing that you've done so much to keep that place alive and going, and what it takes to innovate and just stay competitive, I'm proud of you guys. So you guys are doing great. I was looking at the protest letter, and the only protest letter or form of protest I see is they're worried that you're going to try to extend your hours and turn it into a bar. Do you have any plans of doing that?
I put limitations on our hours in our application, and, and then it's, on top of that, our, our sales numbers will always, it will be automated-based. That'll have to be the main sales income for our business. And I put that all in the letter for them to check it out.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
Just kind of some questions as to anticipated average visit. So the person being served would be somebody who is getting a car wash or whoever's riding with them. What is the average length of service for car wash, detail services, all that?
About 30 to 45 minutes on average. Obviously, we do have some detailed packages that last a little longer. And, you know, we've, I don't want to assume where you're going, but serving people too much alcohol, we still have to go through the ABLE Commission, and we're bound to all the laws the ABLE Commission sets for, as far as over-serving any customers. We have even talked about setting company policies about a two-drink maximum, just to, because we're trying something new, and we want to be safe about it, you know, and just like anywhere you go to lunch, you know, you might have a beer with your lunch or whatever. That's what we're trying to, trying to do here. We don't want someone to come hang out all afternoon and drink.
Yes. That's kind of where I was going with that. But I'm glad to hear that you're looking into some company policy, and that would mean training for, you know, whoever's serving.
Yes.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak. Are there anybody signed up? All right. Anything else from council? Councilmember Holman?
Yes, just going to note that when I was a kid growing up here in the 90s, early 90s, this location, there was a restaurant there. I cannot remember the name of it. I've been trying to Google it. I remember somebody posting about it not that long ago, but it always stood out to me because the outside of it looked like a castle, like it had a castle spire on it. So I know that it was popular, and it definitely served alcohol, so just noting that it wouldn't be out of, or uncommon, or whatever, for this piece of property to have been used for a similar purpose before. So, thanks. If somebody in the audience remembers the name of that restaurant, so, yeah.
Councilmember Montoya?
So just a comment. So the location, I think the, the restaurant, it was either called Steak and Nail or Applegate's Landing, but inside of it, it had this little wheel that would turn water. It was really cool as a kid. But, so my first job was actually valet washing lube.
Oh, okay.
I'm really heartbroken that that's now closed. I had so many fun memories as a 16, 17, 18-year-old working there, so it was a lot of fun. I enjoyed working there.
Yeah. Councilmember Schuler?
Yeah, I don't have any, like, anecdotal things to say, mostly just to say that thank you for working through the process and being willing to work with the neighbors as much as possible and really hearing their concerns, definitely during the pre-development meeting, and then, you know, going above to, to make sure that you're addressing all those things to be a good neighbor. We really, really appreciate those types of applicants and people that come forward in front of us, so just want to say, you know, thank you.
Very welcome, and we've been there a long time, so we try to keep the neighbors happy. Thank you.
All right. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
A motion and second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
All right. And as we said prior to the meeting, item 26 has been withdrawn. This is time, this is an opportunity, this miscellaneous comments, it is an opportunity for citizens to address City Council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We'll start with Danny Miller. Is there a Danny Miller? Okay, we'll move on to Diane Wheeler.
I don't see her.
John Skimmyhorn? Good, okay.
Marguerite Larson, Ward 6. So I appreciate the fact that you are seriously reconsidering item 26. It is not the ideal location for an unhoused shelter. It is too far away from services. There is no transportation. There is people that have not been contacted as to how much it's going to cost you to bring people in, how much it's going to cost you to build the building. But what I did notice is this property was assessed for $674,000, but yet council is happy to pay $940,000 for it. So my question is, why? And I know you can't answer me, but you guys can think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Diane Hudson?
Good evening, Diana Hutzel, Ward 5. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit about 2023 crime review. I know Chief of Police is coming up to speak next month, but I wanted to discuss concerns from citizens. Last year, Norman Police Department daily arrest summaries documented the arrests of 2,464 different individuals for 20, or for 5,227 criminal offenses. Tonight, I'd like to break down some of that data to help you better understand citizens' concerns. In 2022, the Norman Police Department arrested 527 different homeless individuals. Last year, that number was 639. That's a 21% increase. In 2022, the Norman Police Department documented 1,785 homeless criminal offenses. Last year, that number was 2118, an 18%, or 19% increase. Last year, 71% of the individuals arrested in Norman were housed while 26% were homeless. That's a three-to-one ratio. That's alarmingly disproportionate, given that the homeless community represents less than 1% of the total population of Norman. The types of offenses the Norman Police Department arrested, the housed and homeless for in 2023, were extremely similar. Were you to be provided with the list of the 5,000-plus offenses minus the names and addresses of the individuals who committed those, you wouldn't be able to distinguish who did what. Both groups had offenses for trespass, drugs, intoxication, and outraging public decency and other misdemeanors. And tragically, both groups had offenses for assault and battery, arson, burglary, rape, and kidnapping and other violent crimes. Last year, 59% of criminal offenses were committed by housed individuals and 41% by homeless individuals. What makes these percentages significant is that a lesser number of homeless generated significantly more crime. On average, each housed individual committed 1.7 offenses. However, each homeless individual, 3.3. The 639 homeless individuals arrested last year were arrested by the Norman Police Department 1,366 times. The majority of homeless individuals arrested last year have significant criminal records. And I'm not anti-homeless, I am anti-crime. Combined, there are over 1,500 felony and 2,000 misdemeanor convictions amongst that group of 639, over 120 VPOs, and over 400 felony and misdemeanor trials that are pending. All of this data indicates to us that there's a growing element of criminal homeless in our homeless community that puts everyone at risk, including the law-abiding homeless. I also looked at the available data for 2024. 177 criminal offenses have been documented thus far as of the 21 January daily arrest summary. 89 of those are attributable to homeless individuals. That's 50%. We're already 9% higher than last year. I look forward to the Chief of Police speaking and addressing some of the issues as to how we're going to make this better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Paul Wilson?
Good evening, council. I just wanted to address one thing that's been on the topic a lot on social media is the local businesses that are locally owned, operated, that are closing down. I know just in the last week, one closed down and another announced it. A lot of it is the rise of rent on these commercial properties. It's also affecting not only commercial but residential. I know there is an apartment complex, I believe it's in Ward 7, that somebody just got evicted because they withdrew or stopped paying their rent because they wouldn't clean up mold and water damage. This is an ongoing issue with out-of-state investors moving in, buying up commercial property, residential property, hiking up the rent toward these locally owned businesses. And even the residents of Norman can no longer stay in business or no longer afford the rent. I desperately encourage council to come up with some kind of solution to this problem. Because if not, Norman is going to turn into nothing more than corporate America owning all of the restaurants. And it's not going to look good. I love going to local restaurants, local establishments, local places. Because I know that it actually feeds into the community more than going to a chain restaurant or a big box store. I mean, I even went to, as far as, I no longer shop at big box stores for groceries. I now go to Crest. It is an Oklahoma locally owned grocery store. Prices aren't that different. But something has to give. Because if not, like I said, nobody's going to be able to afford rent. Businesses will shut down. It's going to become a ghost town. You think, I mean, just look at downtown Norman, Oklahoma. I believe 21 openings and closings have gone over the last few years, if I'm not mistaken. And that's alarming. Because, yeah, 21 leave, 21 come, that's a high turnover. And it's just not fair to the residents. It's not fair to these business owners. So I implore you guys, please come up with a solution before this gets way more out of hand than it currently is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Stephen Ellis?
Stephen Ellis, 633 Reed Avenue, Ward 4. What I wanted to discuss tonight was the item 26 and how glad I am that the city council is actually looking for a place for a permanent shelter. I don't think that the Hutner address was a particularly auspicious place for that, especially given the sort of lack of attention, at least current attention. I mean, it hasn't been very much talk about this, so maybe I'm missing something about providing services at the location. And the real issue with that location is getting people to services. And I think we all know that if people can't be adjacent to services and where they need to be, they're probably not as likely to stay there as well. So it doesn't solve anybody's problem. The second thing that I wanted to point out about this, though, is that I think it's important that as a city, we sort of come together on our way of thinking about the importance of finding sort of shelter for our unhoused friends. Part of the issue is just making sure that we're putting their interests to the fore because they're the people who are really suffering in this kind of situation. I fear that there's some tendency in the community to think of unhoused persons as the problem rather than as the people who are suffering from the problem. And prioritizing the people who are sort of worst off, I think, makes the most sense in this particular circumstances. As somebody who teaches ethics, I could go off on that for an hour, but I won't. The last thing that I want to say in this actually touches on a point that was raised earlier. I am looking forward to hearing the Chief of Police talk about the crime statistics, in particular in relation to the unhoused. But I think it's really, really important to remember that when you don't have a permanent habitation, you're pretty much always violating the law. There is no point in time during the day when you are not suspect or subject to a potential violation for trespassing at a very minimum. So you've got to take care of your needs, right? You've got to go to the bathroom. You've got to find a place to sleep. You've got to get something to eat. And that requires being places where technically not allowed to be, except at the pleasure of the person who owns the place. And we tend to drive homeless individuals out. So I think it's important to remember when we look at these statistics is we've made being homeless criminal. No wonder there are a lot of.
Thank you, sir.
Michael Blanc? I just want to make sure I wasn't missing him. Kaitlin Witten?
Everyone, I'm Kaitlin Witten, Ward 6, 3100 Woodcrest Creek Drive. Some of you may notice my last name, Witten. I hope that you do. We have a real problem. And his name is Eric Hudson. He lives at 3104 Woodcrest Creek Drive. I don't know if you guys are familiar with where I live, but I'm a block away from the Vineyard. Is everybody familiar with the Vineyard as being a prominent staple here in Norman? It's where a lot of people live. But in between me and the lovely neighborhood of Vineyard lives a nuisance. There's been over 50 calls to this house to law enforcement, multiple made by me and my husband. There has been drug addicts outside my home. I have three children. They all go to school here in Norman. I love Norman. We wanted to grow our family here. But this house is awful. We have prostitution. We've been woken up in the middle of the night with a storm with a woman on our porch who we thought was arguing with somebody. And we opened the door and she is talking to herself because she's so high on drugs. She tells us that she just came from the house next door where she was being raped and she was trying to get away. We called 911. Before the police could get there, we had flooding. We know how Norman does. We had flooding happen and they couldn't get there fast enough. She left and went back to that house. They could not find her. They couldn't talk to her. They came to our porch. We tried everything we could. I don't know when is enough. Both Eric Hudson and Daniel Owens live at that property. They have city tickets against them. I know that you guys can have a hearing where me and my husband, my neighbors, can come to you guys and say, shut off their utilities. There are needles at our playground across the street. The Vineyard Park Playground has found dirty needles and has found human feces. Homeless. Is that where you guys want your kids to grow up? Because I don't. My kids can't go to the park across the street because of this nuisance. I didn't come here to get emotional. It just happens whenever it involves your children. Daniel Owens came outside shooting what looked like an AR-15 at a vehicle. And my husband had to rush in and we all got into the bedroom. My son refused to sleep in his bed because his window is by that house. He sleeps on the floor because he's terrified. He has sent emails to you guys. I'm coming face to face. This is my face. I'm Kaitlin Witten. This is Karen Witten. And there's my neighbor back there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Please.
Sue Sanders?
Hi, I'm Sue Sanders, a retired RN. I've owned my home at 148 Reed Avenue for 30 years until Food and Shelter was built directly across the street in 2018. I've loved my neighborhood and Norman. My daughters could walk safely to elementary school. Because of the huge influx after the unhoused, I'm now outnumbered 100 to 1. I've been physically assaulted with a lethal weapon. My daughters have been sexually molested. There have been many crimes on my property. People knock on my door day and night. Gunshots ring out. We lie on the floor. I see fights and domestic abuse through my living room window. 9% of this population is reported registered sex offenders. Since last spring, I've been told by police not to report trespassing nor crimes that wouldn't be ongoing when they arrived as they don't have enough money and manpower. Disturbances have gotten much worse with the notable increase in guests to Food and Shelter and Share Center. My family and I are receiving verbal, physical threats and property disturbances daily. Norman has attracted 4,000 new homeless during the last five years. There's an abundance of no-threshold free services and assistance, easygoing law enforcement. There are ambulances and fire trucks every other day. I've called in reports of drug deals. I've witnessed, overheard from my property names and descriptions. I see people shooting up. The receptionist always says, I'll tell an officer, nothing happens. People displaying all the behaviors of methamphetamine and psychosis have increased greatly since the holidays. I don't want tax money spent on things that make Norman more of a Mecca for the unhoused. Even downtown is more dangerous than before Food and Shelter. At the city council meeting that voted in Food and Shelter, the reason given for moving it to my neighborhood was that it would improve downtown. That backfired, as well as making Reed Avenue a dangerous slum. At this time, my house is unsalable. My property was termed one of the two most adversely affected by Food and Shelter by April. Those are in city officials have discussed buying it. I desperately want them to follow through. As a petite 64-year-old pending back surgeries, I need to be safe. There are three lots on my property bordering the alley, so it has many uses. I need a safe place to live in my old age. Thank you.
Jack Dawson? Jack, it's your turn.
Mr. Mayor, my buddy Steve. And I know you don't like Steve, you like Steven. But hey, I'm from New York and it's all about nicknames in New York. My real name is John, but please don't call me John. I live in Ward 1. I'm looking at my councilperson for the first time because I didn't know who it was. I've only been in Ward 1 for a year. And what I am about to talk about is not really City of Norman business. It's basically a state problem. But there is stuff that the City of Norman can do. In her years of being mayor, there was only one thing that Bria Clark ever did that I approved of. And that is, early on, it may have even been her first day in office or the first council meeting, she was advocating for something. I can't even remember what it was. But it was a kind of liberal proposal that I didn't even agree with. And it wasn't City of Norman business. It was state business. But I really approved of the fact that she would advocate for it. Because I realize you guys aren't much. And I'm not insulting anybody, at least not intentionally. But you're not full-time. You don't get paid much. You could probably make more working at McDonald's part-time than you make here. But the problem is headlights. And this isn't just because it was a foggy day today, you know? When I first stepped foot in Oklahoma, in fact, I don't think I'd set foot in Oklahoma yet. I set four wheels in Oklahoma. I'd been driving all the way from Rola, Missouri. And when I'm coming down Route 35 approaching what they call the, what do they call it? The Dallas interchange or something? That's pretty tricky for somebody who's never set foot in Oklahoma before. And it was about 1:00 in the afternoon and the sky was as dark as.
You've run out of time, sir. You've run out of time, sir.
I know, and that's another problem.
Yes, it is. Thank you for your comments. Okay.
Mark Wagner?
I've, mayor, city council, staff. Congratulations, I guess. You guys should be really proud of yourselves. It looks to me like y'all have been working really, really hard and you've accomplished quite a few things. What I noticed on the consent docket, you guys shouldn't hide your accomplishments on a consent docket. You should be proud of what you've done. I'm seeing here we've authorized an expenditure of almost $8,400 a month for the electric bill for the Trey Young Family Athletic Center. So that's $100,000. Congratulations. Congratulations, you spent a hundred thousand dollars, taxpayer money. There's another nine hundred thousand dollars going to, um, equipment and services and, or I guess, equipment and furniture for there. So, the, the round number makes me a little suspicious, kind of like when we had that fifty thousand dollar bond issued for thirty-five thousand of repairs for bridges and roads. So, we're up, that's another million. So, we're over, what, about forty-four million on this project so far? We could have fixed a lot of bridges and roads for forty-four million if we had prioritized our infrastructure and things that we desperately need in the city, instead of something that's really, really, it's nice to have. I don't see, or maybe I just don't see the return on investment of over forty-four million dollars in my lifetime. And if we're going to pay for the elect, the, uh, I'm sorry, the custodial service, the eighty-four hundred dollars a month for custodial service, are we also going to pay their electric bill? Are we going to pay their water bill? Pay for their security? It sounds to me like it's a city facility more than it's a private, uh, enterprise. Anyway, I encourage, uh, city council to prioritize the things that we really, really need ahead of the things that are nice to have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bill Hutzel? Hutzel, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Bill Hutzel, Ward Five. Back in October, I watched a city meeting, there was only about five council members there. Someone mentioned an account with nine hundred thousand dollars in it. It was for a project in which the city ended up getting the money from elsewhere, so this was not being used and was available. All of a sudden, a councilperson quickly asked if the money could be used to renovate three city buildings for a shelter. All of a sudden, blueprint showed up and everyone went into executive session. The reason I mention that is it seems every time there's a meeting I attend or watch, spending money on shelters is always mentioned. The finance meeting last week revealed we have a four-point-eight million-dollar shortfall for this year, and if we don't stop spending, we will be broke in five years. The point-in-time report last January showed two-hundred-and-thirteen homeless. Norman police reports show six hundred and thirty-nine homeless individuals were arrested last year alone. I am not against the homeless, I am against the criminals. I am also against city council members giving misinformation to the public about this issue. If only ten percent of the homeless are criminals, then we have sixty-four homeless, sixty-four hundred homeless in Norman. If fifty percent of the criminals, if fifty percent are criminals, then we have about thirteen hundred homeless. I would like the city manager, mayor, or council to provide the public at the next city council meeting, the dollar amount Norman spent last year on this problem from January to December. Shelter, food, transportation for the homeless, costs to city employees cleaning parks, sidewalks, working on blueprints, studies, costs to the police department for the time to arrest, book, transport to detention these people, court costs for the public defenders, the officers who have to go to court to testify, and the fees that cannot be collected. This is a problem that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
That's all. All right, that's all the speakers that we have. We are adjourned.